I'd like to call this meeting to order. And today we have a special guest, our very own, Tim Booth. Tim serves as our Lackawanna County Director of Veterans Affairs. He's also a member of the Abington Memorial VFW 706-9 and a member of the 109th Infantry Association. Tim served in the Pennsylvania Army National Guard for 22 years, from 1985 to 2006. Joined as a private, commissioned to Officer Candidate School, and retired as a major in the National Guard. He had two deployments, one Europe, 2002 and 2003, and Iraq, 2005 to 2006. Tim currently lives in South Abington Township. Major, sir. Floor is yours.
Good morning. If you'd place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tim does a great job. His team down in the first floor takes very good care of our vets, so I just hats off to them. Also, this morning, I'd like to welcome our new Commissioner, Mr. Tom Welby. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
So, first on, reading approval of the minutes. I'm thinking everybody had a chance to look at them. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items. Joan?
Joan Hoda, one. That's Granton. With regard to the second reading of the budget, before I arrived here, I was up at the library checking out the county website, and I noticed that did the board ever put out a 2026 budget message like you've done in prior years?
We did not put one out this year.
Okay, so I didn't miss it.
You didn't miss it.
I tried to pay attention, okay? And also noticed that we still have on the county's website the preliminary budget dated October 15th. Assuming you passed the budget today with the second reading, are you going to then post a final version of it? Because Page 2 needs to change the millage rates.
Will be changed. Once we approve the final budget, then it'll get posted.
And have you any idea when we will, the public will have access to the 2026 digital budget book?
Well, as soon as possible. I don't have the exact answer for you, but we'll be working on it as well.
Yeah, that's a very helpful asset to the general public for drilling down into various departments and certain issues, so hopefully, you know, last year was the first year, and I'm hoping that got refined for this year so that we could see, you know. Numbers don't tell the full story. Sometimes you need a footnote or two.
Right.
And I'll be looking forward to seeing that. Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll get it as soon as humanly possible. Anybody else? All right. Second rea— oh, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Walter Griffith. I'm the Luzerne County Controller. I'm here to address the Commissioners regarding the agenda item, which is the law enforcement officer program. As most of the Commissioners know who have been on the Airport Board, I've been very vocal regarding this law enforcement officer program as the Controller, as well as a member of County Council back in 2021. In fact, in 2021, in September 2021, I sent a letter to the Airport Board asking for an investigation into this matter, and it was turned over by your solicitor, which is Donnie Fredrickson, to the Attorney General's office, and I've heard nothing since then. That was back in September 2021. I have the letter here for the record if you need it, that I asked for an investigation as to how this LEO officer program started in the first place. I never received a response. Now, we're going to fast forward to 2025, and every year thereafter, I've been at Airport Board meetings complaining about this program. The biggest complaint I have is there's no transparency. We met behind closed doors. I've been at every airport meeting. I've never heard about this LEO officer agreement that's on your agenda today. Not once. Not once have I heard the details. Not once, as the Controller of Luzerne County, have we addressed anything about cost. The agreement says there's going to be a cost, that the county of Luzerne will pay 25%. Lackawanna will pay 25%. Of what? There's nothing in the agreement that says, "What's that cost? Is it $50 an hour? Are we paying benefits? Are we paying retirement? What are we paying for?" There's nothing in the agreement, nothing. But it was all done behind closed doors. Commissioner Schirmack was there. He's the only one that was in closed-door sessions. He knows all the answers to these questions, yet we can't get answers to it. I ask these questions of Luzerne County at our meeting, we can't get answers. Why the big secret? Why the big secret? Big secret is because we're trying to funnel money to people for doing something that they're not required to do. I'm a Republican. I'll put that right out on the table. I am not a Bill Gahan fan at all. He's a Democrat.
You're not? Geez, I thought you were, Walter.
I am not. But I will say that when somebody is right, they're right. This program should not be in place. Now, there's been statements made by the Commissioners and by our county manager saying, "We're trying to defund airport security." No, we're not. We're trying to defund, police security is going to be in jeopardy, people are going to be at risk. No, we're not. We have security there. The airport themselves said they don't need it. Why are we doing this? Why are we putting this burden on the taxpayers of the county? But the biggest issue that I have is the transparency issue, and the problem I have as a Republican is that Republicans are supposed to be conservative. Republicans are supposed to stand for what's right or wrong. Republicans are supposed to make sure that these type of deals don't work behind scenes, and we have a Republican on this Commissioner body that sat in every one of those meetings and has yet to divulge what happened in any of them, yet voted for the agreement. I don't know how Mr. Welby can vote on this agreement. It hasn't been anything. There's never been anything divulged. In my last couple of minutes, I have a couple of questions that I wish the Commissioners would write down and answer, specifically Mr. Schirmack, because he's the only one that could answer them, because the agreement says it's a two-year agreement, but there's also a clause that says it automatically renews forever. Forever. Think about that, taxpayers, forever. Every two years, at the end of two years, if nobody objects to this agreement, it automatically renews forever. Now, we don't know who's going to live forever here, but I'm going to tell you, two years from now, people won't even be thinking about this LEO, and it's going to be a big burden on the county taxpayers. So the first question I have is how many police officers will be on site? Seven days a week, 365, five to seven. Second question, what is the cost of the officers? The third question is, will the DA from each county supply any LEOs to the airport, and what is the cost? Obviously, it's going to be Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Sangladoche. Who will be responsible for payment of the officers, Luzerne or Lackawanna County, and who will be providing the reimbursements? If this is a two-year agreement, then why is there a renew clause that states it never ends? These are questions that we should be answering. Why wasn't, why was it not on the work session agenda? Why was it conveniently not put there? But now it's on this agenda. Something smells here, and I'm going to tell you, it doesn't smell good. If these Commissioners are smart in this township or in this county, you won't vote for this LEO agreement until you get some of these questions answered and answered correctly in the light of day for the public to see. Sunshine is the best disinfectant. Thank you.
Okay, Donnie, since you're here and you're on the, you're one of our solicitors on the Airport Board, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Commissioners, what I would say is, the LEO program has been in place probably about 10 years or so up at the airport. Prior, it had been paid for through a grant that the federal government had funded. However, that grant went away two years ago, and Luzerne County District Attorney runs the program through their office, because the airport, the building, the terminal is located in Luzerne County, so you have to have law enforcement from that county or deputized to that county to do that. The cost is approximately $150,000 a year. The agreement is going to be, the airport is going to pay half of that, and then the two counties are going to split the other half, 25 and 25% each. It was discussed at the Airport Board meeting. Luzerne County has already passed it. They passed it at their meeting last week, so, in a public meeting, and we're going to pass it today at a public meeting.
Well, to respond to the behind-closed-doors issues, I mean, we're talking about safety and security.
We're talking about safety, we're talking about security at the airport, and, you know, a lot of the details really aren't subject to right-to-know or disclosure because it could affect the security at the airport.
You know, I don't like accusations of doing things behind closed doors. I mean, we did have the—
Well, it's not being, I mean, we're voting on it today publicly.
Right, but, you know, we had district attorneys there, which, you know, we're following the guidance of both district attorneys from Luzerne and Lackawanna County.
Correct.
You know, as a, you know, I've been on that board for going a little over six years now, or six years. I've been a pilot for nearly four decades, so I know how airports run. I've been in and out of many airports. The way things are today with violence and you just never know. So, is there, is there ever enough security? I know we have, we have, we have paid security officers. They're not, they don't have arresting powers.
Correct. And that's the biggest reason to have law enforcement there is, we do have armed security on-site 24 hours a day. However, if there is an incident, they don't have arrest powers. They can detain and hold, and the purpose of having a LEO, a law enforcement officer there is they can actually make an arrest on-site.
And the other, and then, you know, also to further discuss a little bit more, you know, the response, the police officers that respond first in are Pittston Township.
Pittston Township or Evoque, correct.
And I think they have one car, right? If I remember.
I know Evoque has one officer usually on during the day.
So, you know, the problem is if there's a situation, you know, the response time, and that was DA Sangladoche's biggest concern is response time and—
Yes.
—things like that. So it's been, it's been discussed, it's been, you know, there are two top law enforcement officers. I'm going to kind of go with what they're recommending. It's a small price to pay for Lackawanna County. I think the number is $36,000.
Additionally, I would just point out, Commissioner, also is that District Attorney Sangladoche and District Attorney Gallagher have met, and they have some agreement that they're going to figure out about law and law enforcement from Lackawanna County also serving at the Airport.
Yeah, they're going to have, yeah, they're going to work together to come up with a schedule for the men, or the men and women, whoever's going to be.
Yes.
They're going to work alongside our Security Director at the Airport. To me, it sounds like a very simple operation. They all know what they're doing. And again, I, you know, I'm only going by the recommendations of both top law enforcement officers, or both Brian Gallagher and Sam Sangladoche. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think there was anything underhanded, or we discuss these things at meetings along with the district attorneys. You know, I, it's a small price to pay for safety and security. I mean, I travel in and out of that airport. I'm sure many people from Lackawanna County do and would appreciate them. Matter of fact, when I flew out over the holiday, I was talking to one of our LEOs at the desk. So, I believe he might even have been a retired state trooper. I'm not sure what he did, but it doesn't matter, but—
And how the program works is we reimburse Luzerne County for what they pay, the district attorney's office pays to have them there. There are no benefits, there are no pensions, there's nothing like that from us. Now, what they get through the DA's office, I don't know what, how that works.
Okay, all right. Can I just add two things to this issue? I just want to thank the Controller from Luzerne County for coming up to speak, and I'll get into more detail on this towards the end of the business part of the meeting when this is up for a vote. But I think what Mr. Griffith was referring to was there was a question at the airport meeting on whether or not the executive sessions were being held properly. He had raised the issue, a reporter from The Times Leader had raised the issue, and I had raised the issue at a previous Airport Board meeting. Usually, executive sessions are supposed to be held to discuss personnel matters and other things. Otherwise, you would have a public caucus or a public work session or something like that. So I think that's what Mr. Griffith was objecting to and others had objected to. And what we did ask for was, I made a motion at the airport meeting to ask our solicitors to write a memo to the board just solidifying that it is, in fact, legal to have these executive sessions. We did not receive that yet, so that's the first point. The second point is, what Mr. Griffith is also objecting to is the same thing I objected to, and I know he said he's not a huge Bill Gahan fan, but I'm a fan of his for standing up and saying what he thinks is right. What we were simply saying is, when this came to light, when Luzerne County had asked Lackawanna County to chip in for the program, the three top officials at the airport, the Airport Director, the Deputy Director, and the Director of Public Safety, who, by the way, is a former air marshal, all said, "We don't need this LEO program." And I, that I have the minutes from the Airport Board meeting when I asked them directly and specifically, "Do we need this program?" I got three noes from the Airport Director, the Deputy Director, and the Director of Public Safety, former air marshal. And the reason they said that we don't need the program is because we pay, the airport pays $500,000 a year for an armed security force. The TSA is armed. Commissioner Schirmack is correct, they don't have arrest powers, but they will call the police, and the police respond very quickly. That's the way it's always worked at the airport. And that's what we were objecting to, is that when you have three of the top airport officials telling you, "Hey, this program is no longer funded by the federal government. We looked into it, we did an analysis, and we don't, we're not recommending you move forward with this." That's what I think Walter was basing his comments on, and I'll be basing my no vote on this later on in the meeting. The other thing I believe he's referring to is that the legislation seems open-ended in the area of exactly what we're going to pay. I think that, I'm going to vote against this, but I do think that that should be delineated in the agreement, because it does seem open-ended to me, but, and I'll reserve the rest of my comments for the actual legislation.
Tom?
When it comes up.
Okay.
I'll have a comment when it comes up for a vote.
All right. Well, we'll move on here. Ordinance, second reading, 25-0293, ordinance, second reading of their annual budget.
Commissioners, at this time, we are suggesting and recommending to the board to table this ordinance for two weeks. The reason being is, is not, so the public knows, is not to raise the millage rates or raise taxes or anything like that. It's about a hard number that hasn't been given to us yet about electricity that we have to pay for, for the 18 buildings. Without that hard number, it would be hard-pressed for you individuals to vote upon that at this moment in time. I think the extra couple of weeks will then allow Mr. Welby to dive into the budget also. I know that Commissioner Schirmack and Commissioner Gahan are in favor of the budget, but here to explain that and electricity bill is our CFO, Mr. Dave Bolzoni.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
The deferred approval would enable the Revenue and Finance Department to quantify the cost of the electricity contract for the 2026 budget year. Our existing contracts with Constellation Energy have started to expire in November and will continue to expire in December. We have 37 accounts with the energy supplier. We're evaluating two proposals that were received following a request for proposal process in conjunction with the prospective electricity savings that we're going to realize from the completion of the energy savings project. We expect to have that information compiled prior to the next work session, most of which we've assembled now. So with the proposals that we received, as everyone in this room is aware, your electricity costs are going up. They're going to continue to go up. The proposals that we received, the lowest-cost proposal represented a 42% increase in electricity cost, which doesn't come as any surprise to me, or should it come as any surprise to anyone in the room. As was pointed out by the Chief of Staff, it doesn't affect the millage. We're not looking at an increase in millage to cover that cost. With the first several runs of the budget, we had some surplus that was realized once we had compared both revenues and expenses in the prospective 2026 budget. It would probably deplete that to some extent, but we really want to try and quantify it much more closely so we know what that number is. So it's my recommendation that we defer the approval until we have a number that's more exact that we can plug into the budget.
Plus, you're waiting on, I think you stated that you're waiting on the, for the ESCO project, the amount of savings that we could recognize as well, right?
Correct. And typically, after an ESCO project, there's a meeting in which they're going to go over individually the prospective savings in a number of areas. I just ask them to provide me with a pretty accurate estimate in advance of that meeting, because we just don't have the time. The other part of it, too, is with the existing contract with Constellation, it does allow for renewals of that contract. So we were working with Constellation as well to get a cost. So if they were going to extend the contract, what is it going to cost based on a comparison between the two proposals that we received in the request for proposal process? Constellation did not submit a proposal, but again, they have an existing contract which has a clause for a renewal if we desired to do so. So we're really comparing costs between the two proposals we received in the request for proposal process, and also the cost that Constellation is providing, and then adding into that, or I should say subtracting from that, the estimated savings we'd receive from the completion of the energy savings project.
Yep. And then also to add is that there's not going to be any adjustment in millage and taxes and stuff like that.
Correct. It doesn't impact the millage calculation.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, I do appreciate the delay. While I was sworn in last Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon, we started our work sessions. I was working with Commissioner Gahan, Commissioner Schirmack, and Mr. Bolzoni, and Chief of Staff Jeffries, and some department heads already on the budget. Unfortunately, we haven't gone through every department yet, and we did have a little bit of a short week last week, and I appreciate a little bit more time. I'd like to, before voting on the budget, I'd appreciate the time to look into the budget a little deeper than I have been able to, and that's appreciated as well.
Okay.
And Commissioner, I would just add that under the charter, we have until January the 1st to adopt the budget without having to take any other action about continuing spending resolutions and so forth. So we're good till January 1st, and additionally, I would just state that you're probably better off delaying it, because otherwise you would have to go and reopen the budget and go through that process.
I mean, the next meeting is the 17th, so it's not far away.
Correct. That is correct. Yeah, we have time.
You need to make a motion. Take it. Yep. So, hearing that, do I have a motion to table this budget?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, we'll discuss this further on the 17th. Resolutions. Resolution 25-0302, approving current payables.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 393-808-3944, 582 inclusive, totaling $2,525,268.78. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $9,407,210.22. Adopted regime, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Sherman, Chairman Schirmack.
Do I have a motion to approve our payables?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 25-0294, approving LSA application.
Approving the filing of applications with the statewide local share account grant program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the statewide local share grant program on behalf of the various agencies as per attached. Now therefore, be it resolved, that Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners and the Chief of Staff to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the statewide county local share account grants, and that the Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized the submission of these applications to the statewide local share account grant program on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects. Adopted regime, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin McNada.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. We have, currently have a total of 21 applications for LSA thus far, including the 12 for today. LSA statewide has closed as of November 30th, and we will actually have more applications at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. We receive a 2% administrative fee for administering the grant, and this is no cost to the county, but we are required to have a resolution for all applications. Thank you.
Any questions? So, do I have a motion to approve the LSA applications?
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, thank you, Director, for all of your work, and also thank you to Sandy Apshinsky, your primary grant writer, for all of the work. It's wonderful that the county, through the employees of the county, can help all of these different organizations and businesses with these grant applications that otherwise they wouldn't be able to do it. There's an awful lot of paperwork that's involved in applying for these grants, and it's much more difficult also to get these grants, and your Commissioners clearly are working right now with the Governor's Office, with our state representatives, and our two senators on getting the grant money that was filed for last year at this time, and we hope that within just a few weeks, that some of the lobbying that we all will be doing with our representatives, our senators, and our Governor's Office, and bringing some of that last year's application, statewide LSA local share account grant money, we hope that perhaps at the next meeting or two, we'll have some announcements of successes with your applications, and thank you all for the work that you do, not just for the county, but for all those organizations that, because of that, are able to apply for these grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Resolution 25-0295, ratifying CDBG modifications and revisions.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby ratify the submission of the following community development block grant program budget modifications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the federal fiscal years of 2021, 22, 23, and 24 on behalf of the participating entitlement municipalities, Archibald Borough, Clark Summit Borough, Dixon City Borough, Troup Borough, and Elephant Borough. For Archibald Borough, they will reduce the Archibald Hill and Rock Street Stormwater improvements Phase 2 to 0 and reallocate $107,601 to the Archibald McCandrew Drive Phase 1 Street Improvement Project. They'll also reduce the Archibald First-Time Home Buyer Program activity budget to 0 and reallocate $107,640 to the Archibald Main Drive, McCandrew Drive, Phase 1 Street Improvement Project. They will reduce the Archibald First-Time Home Buyer Program by $35,898.10 and reallocate the same to the Archibald McCandrew Drive Phase 1 Street Improvement Project. And finally, they will increase and fund the Archibald McCandrew Project Phase 1 with a combined total allocation of $251,139.10. Clark Summit Borough will reduce the Clark Summit Housing Rehabilitation Program budget to 0 and reallocate $81,712 to the Clark Summit Senior Center Rehabilitation Project. They will also reduce the Clark Summit First-Time Hire Home Buyer Program by $50,270 and reallocate the same to the Clark Summit Senior Center Rehabilitation Project. They will increase the fund of the Clark Summit Senior Center Rehabilitation Project with a total combined allocation of $131,982. Dixon City Borough will reduce the Crystal Park ADA Improvements Activity Budget to 0 and reallocate $94,884 to the Mary Street Improvements Phase 1 Project. They will reduce the Pancoast Street Stormwater and Roadway Paving Project to 0 and reallocate the $96,109 to the Mary Street Improvement Phase 1 Project. They will reduce the First-Time Home Buyer Program budget to 0 and reallocate the $96,142 to the Mary Street Improvements Phase 1 Project. And they will reduce the First-Time Home Buyer Program by $71,202.94 and reallocate the same to the Mary Street Improvement Phase 1 Project. They will increase and fund the Dixon City Mary Street Improvements Project Phase 1 with a total combined allocation of $358,337.95. Troup Borough will reduce the Troup Memorial Drive Paving Activity Budget to 0 and reallocate $38,916.74 to the Troup Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. They will reduce the Troup Memorial Drive Paving Project Activity Fund to 0 and reallocate $78,124 to the Troup Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. They will reduce the Troup First Home— They will reduce the Troup First Time Home Buyer Program by $47,311.26 and reallocate the same to the Troup Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project. They will increase and fund the Troup Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project with a total combined allocation of $164,352. Elephant Borough will reduce the Jackson Street Sanitary and Stormwater Separation Project Phase Two Activity Budget to Zero and reallocate $11,380.14 to the Elephant Jackson Street Phase Two Dash Two. They will reduce the Jackson Street Sanitary and Stormwater Separation Project Phase Three Activity Budget to Zero and reallocate $90,160 to the Elephant Jackson Street Phase Two Dash Two. And the Elephant First Time Home Buyer, they will reduce the Elephant First Time Home Buyer Program Activity Budget to Zero and reallocate $88,388.01 to the Elephant Jackson Street Phase Two Dash Two. Finally, they will increase and fund the Elephant Jackson Street Phase Two Dash Two Project with a total combined allocation of $190,378.14. Be it further resolved that the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179 and the Citizen Participation Plan and all applicable requirements under the Community Development Block Grant Program, including the advertised public hearing notices and opportunities for written comment. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here once again is Director Magnotta.
Thank you for that one, Chief. This legislation ratifies CDBG budget modifications for Archibald Borough, Dixon City Borough, Troup Borough, Elephant Borough, and Clark Summit Borough across fiscal year 21 through 24 funding. The legislation real allocates funding from completed or no longer in development projects into new or ongoing eligible activities that are ready to proceed. And the approval is required immediately to maintain HUD timeliness compliance. And as always with CDBG funds, this is no cost to the county.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second, on the question?
On the question, in our work session, we discussed this and I was just incredibly disappointed initially at the moving of funds from the First Time Home Buyers Program, which I've been just a huge fan of and what that program has enabled so many people to move into, to allow them the opportunity to move into their own home is something that everyone here, particularly your Commissioners and the staff here, is 100% in support of. But I was reminded, and it's something that I needed to be reminded of, there are communities, there are municipalities in our county in which the First Time Home Buyers Program isn't as much in demand as it is in other parts of our county and that these funds that were going to be moved, it was necessary to move them or lose them and that the projects that they were being moved into were critical. And I do agree, although I do with hesitancy. And hopefully in the future, with our partners that we work with and that the city works with in the First Time Home Buyers Program, we can establish the distribution of funds in an area in which they might be more, better received. And also with our media partners, also that they can help us inform the public of these opportunities that are available. So while I do it with hesitance, I am in support of this move of these funds, although it was difficult to read initially, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Resolution 25-0296 approving an adult probation grant.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve the submission of the Pennsylvania Crime Commission on Crime and Delinquency Adult Probation Fiscal Year 2025 through 26. Grant and aid in the amount of $261,015. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Treatment Court Project Director, Mr. Gregory Betts.
Good morning Commissioners, so this grant is retroactive grant to July 1st, 2025. The state released the grants late due to the budget issues with the state. So it's a 12-month grant that will go to June 30th of 2026. This grant will pay for the salaries of four probation officers, their salaries and their benefits.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve the grant?
So move.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 25-0297 approving the IP grant submission.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the 2025-2026 intermediate punishment grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in the amount of $420,000. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again here is Director Betts.
Commissioners, this grant also goes back to July 1st of 2025, 12-month grant to June 30th of 2026. This grant will pay for salary and benefits of two case managers and one parole officer along with services like treatment, housing, job placement, recovery mentoring. It also pays for drug screens, electronic monitoring devices, and other services vital to the operation of Treatment Court.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the grant submission?
So move.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion, or Resolution 25-0298 approving the agreement with Westlaw.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the renewal contract for the Court of Common Police Court with Westlaw for five years at $18,202 per month for the first year. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Court Administrator, Attorney Frank Castellano.
Thank you, Chief, good morning Commissioners. On behalf of the Court of Common Please, this is a request to renew the existing Westlaw contract. As you know, Westlaw is the legal research platform that allows the court, the public defender's office, and the county solicitor's office to obtain all the necessary legal research and materials for the work that those departments do. This is a five-year renewal extension of the existing contract. It would include a 2% increase year-over-year, so that's why it's been negotiated to five years. Because typically, if it were just a one-year renewal, it could be up to a 7% increase. So by extending it out five years, we're getting a 2% year-over-year increase. It includes 50 accounts for the departments that we talked about, our judges, their law clerks, the public defender's office, and the county solicitor's office. And we ask that this be approved today.
Thank you, well, do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Westlaw?
So move.
Second, on the question?
I would just like to point out Commissioners that the Court Administrator's Office and the Solicitor's Office also worked this year to save some money and we canceled the books. We were actually still receiving the hard books that nobody was using, so we worked together to cancel those. So that was a, how much did that save Frank, about 20 grand or?
It saved, it was between 16 and 20,000, so it was a good savings, it was a good move.
Okay, okay, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Frank.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0299 entering into offender management agreement.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into an offender management systems maintenance and support agreement via PATH Technologies for the Lackawanna County Prison. Agreement is to commence immediately and expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Here to speak upon that is our Warden of the Lackawanna County Prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Thank you, Chief, good morning Commissioners. This document is one that memorializes an agreement between Via Path and the county and the purpose of it is to ensure that the county maintains the server that's used for the prison's computer system known as the Offender Management System.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the management agreement?
So move.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0300 entering into an agreement with Kronos/UKG.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Kronos/UKG one-year renewal agreement for the time and attendance system at a cost of $54,510.73. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again here is our CFO, Mr. Dave Bolzoni.
Commissioners, this legislation represents the annual renewal for the Kronos timekeeping system, which consists of the time clocks distributed throughout county buildings and the software which captures payroll data. The original contract dates to April 2019 and has been renewed annually, which is allowed under that contract. The time clocks have been updated since that time, the cost increases 4%, which is allowed within the contract, which equates to an annual cost of $54,510.73. Approval is recommended.
That's, I was just going to say, are you, I know there's been some discussion whether we're going to continue this program and if you're recommending it.
That discussion, I think, will come at a later date. We did have a fairly healthy discussion regarding the renewal in the work session. I am meeting with someone from UKG, which is the parent company of Kronos, to discuss options that may be more favorable to the county than the existing system. But that discussion will come at a later date and obviously we can discuss the existing system further.
Well, do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Kronos?
So move.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 25-0301 authorizing the sale of tax liens.
Whereas Lackawanna County has owed outstanding taxes that are secured by real estate tax claims for the fiscal years ending December 31st, 2023 and prior years, will be owed additional outstanding taxes that will be secured by real estate tax claims for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024 and will be owed additional outstanding taxes that will be secured by real estate tax claims for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. And whereas the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority will purchase the 2023 and prior tax claims in an estimated amount not to exceed the face value of the 2019 through 2023 as well as acquire the face value of the then unredeemed liens values of the 2024 delinquent tax liens as of January 1st, 2027, the then unredeemed lien values of the 2025 delinquent taxes as of January 1st, 2028, and then unredeemed lien values of the 2026 delinquent tax liens as of January 1st, 2029. And now therefore be it, it is hereby resolved that the county agrees to sell its 2023 and prior tax claims in an estimated amount not to exceed the face value of 2019 through 2023 outstanding delinquent real estate tax amounts due and owing as of January 1st, 2023, as well as acquire the face value of the then unredeemed lien values of the 2024 delinquent tax liens as of January 1st, 2027, the then unredeemed lien values of the 2025 delinquent tax liens as of January 1st, 2028, and the then unredeemed lien values of the 2026 delinquent tax liens as of January 1st, 2029 to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority pursuant to the agreement and other supporting documents and amendments that shall be in a form approved by the Chair of the Commissioners and the County Solicitor. Be it further resolved that upon the sale, the county will assign such sold tax claims to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority and the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority will then turn, assign these tax claims to its lender. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's CFO Bolzoni.
Commissioners, this resolution approves the renewal of a tax lien sale in the amount of $1,750,000. This transaction is purely a cash flow instrument which will enable the county to accelerate the receipt of a component of delinquent taxes which will be used to fill a gap in the 2026 budget. The county used the same transaction in 2023 in the amount of $1,500,000. Strong collections enabled the county to accelerate repayment of the supporting note that was issued to purchase the liens, which had a maturity date of 2028. So because of strong collections, that note actually would have matured by the end of this year. The liens will be resold to the Redevelopment Authority as noted in the resolution. The Redevelopment Authority will transact the note with Fidelity Bank to complete the sale. The Authority will adopt a resolution supporting this purchase in December as well at their upcoming meeting. And I will note that accepting the city of Scranton in 2015, Lackawanna County is the only government unit to complete a partial sale of tax liens. Most transactions that are completed are full sale of tax liens. And in this case, I recommend approval as well.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve the sale of the tax liens?
So move.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Resolution 25-0303 entering into an engagement letter.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a letter of engagement with Dehaye McCandrew, Scranton, for the establishment and administration of the Section 125 Flexible Spending Accounts. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is CFO Bolzoni.
Commissioners, I would ask your indulgence to bear with me. I prepared a longer explanation on this legislation since we had what I'll call a fairly healthy debate during the work session. Although I shouldn't be surprised because anything I present during a work session is always, always seems to be subject to a healthy debate. Flexible Spending Accounts, this employee benefit offers a method to save money on a pre-tax basis for a variety of medical and dependent care expenses for our employees. It is an employee benefit. Payroll deductions are made to employee-specific accounts. A medical flexible spending account debit card is provided to the employees for ease of transaction. As noted in the promotional information provided by the firm, the medical FSA is prefunded on day one of the plan, typically that's the first week of January, and allows for a $3,200 maximum savings. And it does allow for a $670 carryover, which we also talked about in the work session. An employee portal allows for ease of monitoring, account balances. A similar structure applies to the dependent care FSA with a $5,000 maximum contribution with no carryover in that case. In addition to dependent care, common medical expenses which can be paid through the plan include eyeglasses and we do have an excellent eyeglass plan, but there is a cost to purchase eyeglasses. This offers an alternative, pre-tax, dental costs as well, and even over-the-counter medical supplies. The firm recommended to oversee this program as Dehaye McCandrew, they're located in Scranton. They were established in 1988. Dehaye McCandrew provides programs supporting human resource administration and employee benefit plans, which is its principal offering. The program cost is based on several factors which include the number of employee participants. In considering the program initially, we considered its value for the entire employee base but thought it'd be a more practical approach to induce, introduce it to the non-union employee contingent first and then engage with the union employee base for prospective implementation in 2027. The full year of this program will enable us to gauge the union interest, again, for prospective use in 2027, but also would allow us to really understand what the participation levels will be for the non-union employee base. The program cost is $25,800 and important to note that this cost may be reduced by the decrease in the employer FICA contribution. Again, this is a pre-tax savings deduction. I provided an example in the legislative worksheet. So, the example, if 300 employees deduct $500 annually, the county would save $475, which would then decrease what that gross cost is for the program of $25,800. How you arrive at that, if anyone cares, 300 times 500 employees is $150,000 times the FICA rate, which is the employer contribution of 7.65%. FICA is shared between the employer contribution, employer... FICA is shared between the employer contribution, employee contribution. A recommendation is made to approve this agreement for one year, and again, that would allow us to really develop the program and see how the participation levels would work out within the county. I would like to point out with this program, and really with any program that we're involved in, and any cost, that there's a difference between cost and value that we're all certainly aware of. Cost is meaningless without value. So in this case, this program was reviewed not only by myself, but it was introduced to our former HR director, and also reviewed by our benefits coordinator, and all three of us determined that based on what amounts to a fairly limited cost, there's a lot of value that can be derived for the employee base. So again, we're recommending approval.
So, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second. On the question.
On the question, I just have a couple of comments on this. So, providing our employees with a modern health savings account option, I think is a very, very good and solid idea, and I fully support exploring programs that strengthen benefits for the entire county workforce. But even a good idea has to follow a good process. The proposed twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollar contract that originally was forty-three thousand came to the county because one company reached out directly. The county then contacted a second company for a comparison quote, but in my opinion, that is not a competitive procurement. For a program of this size and this importance, the only responsible path, in my opinion, is a public RFP or RFQ that allows any qualified firm to submit a proposal, and I'm sure that there are multiple companies out there that offer these types of programs. But it's impossible to know whether this is a great price, a fair price or wildly overpriced. It's no different, in my opinion, than buying a car. If you walk onto one lot, look at one car, and accept the first price you're given, you have no idea if you're getting a good deal. You only know the value once you've compared multiple options side by side. The same applies here in this instance. Taxpayers deserve to know that we didn't just take the first number handed to us, that we tested the market and chose the vendor that delivers the best value, the strongest service, and the most reliable platform for our employees. This is not about the merits of the program, in my opinion. It's about good government. It's about following established best practices, strengthening public trust, and ensuring that every contract we approve is defensible, competitive, and in the best interests of the people we serve. So once a proper RFP or RFQ is issued and evaluated, I will gladly support moving forward with the health savings account program that emerges from a transparent and accountable process, but in this instance, I will be voting no.
Any questions?
Commissioner Gahin's point is, is, is well-made and, and, and well-taken. My concern is that, that our entering into an, an RFP, our employees won't be able to take advantage of this kind of program and the benefits of it until 2027, and, and I think if we can do this for one year and allow that time, during that time, to, if we so choose, to seek out an RFP or RFQ for this, this proposal, I, I, I think that's the way I'm leaning, and, and I have to tell you that years and years ago, I participated in a flexible spending plan in, in a previous employer, and, and over the course of the year, I kind of forgot about it. I didn't have a ton of money in there, but I kind of forgot about it, and then in late December, I was running around to a local pharmacy, buying up a, an unbelievable load of aspirin and cough medicine and, and having not used it, and I still didn't use it all. And at that time, you lost it all on December 30th, that you, December 31st, that you didn't, that you didn't spend. And, and what I do like about this program in particular, besides the expansion of the things that you can use this, this, this money for, first, it's deducted from your, your, so to speak, taxable income, that amount of money, which is terrific, but secondly, you can use it for so many different things, as Mr. Bolzoni pointed out, but in particular, you can use it for daycare. You can use all of that money that you put aside, that you would have paid to daycare directly regardless of whether or not this exists. You have to pay your daycare. You can take that money, put it directly into the account, and from that account, pay your daycare provider that amount and, and, and save that, that, granted, it's not a ton of money, but you can do that and, and save money with that, and almost for, for that reason alone, and, and also the fact that, that down the road, we can seek out that, that RFP, but, but for that reason, I, I, I will be voting for it.
Well, the only thing I have to add is I, I know that, you know, with the increases to deductibles and things like that, this is certainly a benefit to our employees, and, and again, to have it start beginning of the year would be beneficial to whoever would like to enroll. I, I think it's a good program, and I, and I know you've done your homework. I know you've looked into this. It's, it just wasn't just a spur-of-the-homage decision. You, you started this, I think, in 2024, looking into these things. I have no issue with it. I think it's a good idea. It's a year contract. It's a local company, and it certainly is, falls under professional services, so, you know, I, I have, you know, no problem with putting it out for RFPs and Qs and whatever else there is, but in this case, I think it's, it's such a benefit to our employees that I think it's something that I would definitely approve, so that's all I have to add. So, on that, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Lastly, Resolution twenty-five dash zero three zero four, entering into a LEO or law enforcement officer agreement.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby enter into an agreement with Luzern County and the Wilkes-Barre Scranton International Airport to provide law enforcement officer services at the Transportation Security Administration checkpoint effective immediately and expire on December 31st, 2027. Adopted or regulated in the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
So, Donnie, the one word that I, that I don't really love that's in there is, if it's forever, forever. Is that something we can change?
Yeah, it's cancelable by either party. I think it's 30 days' notice, yes.
So, I mean, that's, forever isn't forever.
Correct.
It is cancelable. You know, again, I, this has been approved by Luzern County Council.
Yes.
Both district attorneys, which in my mind are top law enforcement officers, are on board, certainly recommend it. I know DA Sangladoche is all for it. I know our, our district attorney Gallagher is, was on board the minute I talked to him about it. Again, it's, you know, we live in a crazy world right now, and any extra security to me is a benefit to all. I just traveled over the holiday, and matter of fact, I was talking to some LEOs in other airports. So other airports are utilizing this, this, this way of law enforcement, and for us, it's just a little added extra bonus. It's, it's a small number for us. I think it's thirty-six thousand dollars for Lackawanna and both Luzern to pay.
Roughly thirty-six, correct.
I mean, to me, if you break that down per day, that's a very inexpensive little extra security, and, and folks with arresting power. So, you know, I, I certainly don't have an issue with it. It's certainly cancelable at any time if we decide not to do it anymore, if the district attorneys decide that it's not necessary, or if the federal government steps back in and wants to start funding it again, which I would certainly be after them to do that.
And that's something that both counties and the airport has been bothering our representatives and senators to try to re-establish that funding. Because it was cut, I think it was two years ago, it was cut from the budget, and, you know, that was, that paid for the program for the most part. I think the airport did contribute five thousand a month towards the difference, but, you know, it was covered by the federal government otherwise, and we've been petitioning them to reinstate that money, but it hasn't occurred yet.
I would certainly continue to do that, so.
Well, at this point, do I have a motion to approve the LEO agreement?
So moved.
I have a second. I will second. On the question.
Yes, on the question, I want to be very clear while, why I will not be voting for the LEO program, but before I do, I'd like to again explain what this actually is and what's been happening at the airport. For many, many years, the airport participated in a federal TSA initiative called the LEO program, short for Law Enforcement Officer Program. It reimbursed local police departments for having officers on-site as a supplemental presence. The key word there is federal. In 2024, TSA ended that funding nationwide, not just in Pennsylvania, across the country. It wasn't cut by Lackawanna County. It wasn't cut by Luzern County. It simply no longer exists. Since then, Luzern County has voluntarily paid about twelve thousand dollars a month to keep a version of that program going, and it's my understanding that the district attorney from Luzern County hires those officers or whoever he sees fit, and the airport chipped in another five thousand dollars a month. But it is no longer a federally supported, federally supported or federally required program. It is an unfunded add-on that the federal government does not require or support, and, this is a key point, one that the airport's own officials say that they do not need, and this is what I'm basing my vote on today, and I'll refer to the minutes from the airport board meeting from October 23rd, 2025, and I'll quote them directly. Commissioner Gahin asks Public Safety Director Baylor, who by the way, is a former air marshal, if the airport was safe. Mr. Baylor, former air marshal, public safety director, said, "It is safe." Commissioner Gahin then asked, "Do we need the LEO program?", to which Mr. Baylor replied, "No. The LEO program is not required by law. TSA has also indicated that it is not required and they do not support it." Commissioner Gahin then asked Mr. Beersley, the airport director, "Do we need this program?" Mr. Beersley responded, "No." Mr. Gahin then asked Ms. Teichman, who is the deputy director of the airport, if the LEO program is warranted, and she replied, "No." Now, why would they say that we don't need to pay for this program and we don't need this program? Because the airport pays five hundred thousand dollars a year for a 24/7 armed security force. TSA has its own armed personnel. Local police can and do respond when needed, just like everywhere else. The idea that airport professionals, armed federal agents, and a fully funded 24/7 airport security force are not enough, and only an optional program that we used to have funding for can save us, in my opinion, defies logic, math, and gravity. This is like being told by your mechanic, "Your brakes are fine," and then Luzern County jumps in and says, "Pay for new brakes anyway. Don't you support safety?" Or it's like someone insisting that you buy a fire extinguisher for a house they admit isn't on fire, doesn't have a stove, and has a sprinkler system already installed. In my opinion, it's absurd. What's even more absurd is the Assistant Airport Director BJ Teichman did an analysis of the LEO program and found that just this year, between April and September, even with the program, the LEO program active, there were six days out of the month with no police coverage from the LEO program, and 24 days out of the month where they were present eight hours or less, proving that it's not the magic shield that some pretend it is. And again, there was a lot more to her analysis, and that is what, outside of it not being funded anymore, led every airport official to say, "We don't recommend that you pay for this program." So, in conclusion, what's being proposed here would commit Lackawanna County to pay for additional police coverage at the airport that serves no demonstrated purpose, adds no measurable benefit to passengers, our own airport officials say is redundant and unjustified, and provides no improvement to airport operations. It's a solution in search of a problem, and a very expensive one at that. So for those reasons, and out of simple respect for the taxpayers of Lackawanna County and the operational expertise of the men and women at the airport, I will be voting no. And what I said at the airport meeting was, "I don't know how to run an airport. I've only been on an airplane once in my life, but I take the advice of the people who do know how to run an airport." These are people with decades and decades of experience in running an airport. The public safety director, as I've mentioned twice now, and I kept mentioning down at the airport meeting, is a former air marshal with decades of experience in public safety. If he thought it was important and he told the board or told me, "We need this program", absolutely, I would back it a thousand percent. The district attorney had the nerve down in Luzern County to insinuate that, I think Mr. Griffith and I, the controller from Luzern County, were somehow defunding the police. It's not the case at all. It's defunding the unnecessary. I mean, we just got out of a thirty, we're coming out of the hole of a thirty-seven million dollar deficit, nineteen million dollars in unpaid bills. We don't have the wherewithal to pay for programs that, the people at the airport are telling us, "You don't need it." So that's why I will be voting no on this program today, not because I don't support the police departments across Lackawanna County, because I support common sense, and I support following the people who know how to run an airport. Thank you.
Tom, anything?
I, I obviously wasn't around for the, for, for the meetings a year or so ago, or, the conversations between the counties regarding this, but, 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 but I, I do have concerns and, and serious feelings about this, particularly regarding law enforcement and regarding security in 2025. What's been happening in, in our country in particular, there's things around the world, but what's been happening in our country is almost beyond comprehension, some of the horrible terrorist things that, and, and just horrors that happened just a week ago. What happened with our National Guardsmen? Just somebody comes around the corner and, 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 and fires on them and kills one of them and mortally wounds a, a, a second, and so many things that are going on that, that, that we can't prepare for, and, but, but, but in, in that, I, I think that we need to do everything that we can, as, as much as he can, we can. This is going to cost us a little less than forty thousand dollars a year, which was, which isn't chump change, for sure, but still, it concerns me that, that for something that has existed for, for 10 years there, to lessen the impression that the public might have of security at our airport deeply concerns me. To, to put out there that we're going to have lesser, whether they're the sheriffs or, or hired deputies, whatever they are, the law enforcement officials that would be there. I, I want to make a clear impression to the public, a clear impression to anyone that, that might have misgivings and, and, and thoughts that tend toward evil. I want to make very clear to all of them that security will, will be as strong as we can possibly do at our airport, at, at our county government buildings, and, and wherever we go, and, and I, I, I'm sorry that I wasn't there to participate in the conversations in the past, but I, I feel very strongly about making it very clear to everybody that they are safe in, 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 in our public buildings and in our airport and in our transportation center, so I, I will be voting yes for this.
All right, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Mr. Welby, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a frequent traveler through the airport. I'm also a pilot, and I go a lot through the general aviation, and I have not seen anything there that would constitute not being secured walking through that airport. There's security, there's people all over the place. If there's an issue, they could restrain somebody, tell the police, either Pittston, Dupont, Old Forge, whatever, respond there. So that's my opinion. I think our airport is very safe, and I'm through there quite frequently. In fact, I just come back through there Monday. Moving on, Mr. Gahin, I still have, and it's active is the lawsuit against you using taxpayer money to challenge everything that was going on. It's still an active lawsuit, and hopefully will suffice in it as soon as it gets to court. I also filed against the tax assessor here in preventing him from filing and certifying the reassessment. And we're asking that it be heard in a court, but ask for a court in another jurisdiction outside of, out of Lackawanna County. And we're gonna get an answer, plus there's also a challenge in this against the tax increase, against the people in this county. And we just gotta do things. I have ready to file a lawsuit against Lackawanna County Attorney Joseph Joyce. His firm for fraudulent transfers of real estate, and that's gonna happen, and it's gonna be an embarrassment to the county that we have people that have no regard and disregard other people, what's going on, and fraudulently transfer properties that they know is illegal to do, yet they go do it, so they're gonna pay it a price. Moving on past that, I donated 600 cooked turkeys and turkey breasts to the veterans in Berwick, PA, who needed it, and at least they'll have a meal for Thanksgiving. I have now coming up the Bob Olis 32nd Christmas Day Dinner that I've done for the last 32 years. It's open to all those that don't want to be home alone on Christmas. We deliver two meals to a family, and they can come and take takeouts if they so desire. The phone number that we have is 272-250-3128, and that's to order a dinner. We deliver two meals to a family, and we do it that way because we believe that seniors are the ones that should get a meal, not 10 people sitting in the house that could come to the dinner, pick up a takeout, and have their dinner. And, to put it, it's one of the best places to be on Christmas Day.
Where is it, Bob?
I could be anywhere in the world, and for the last 32 years, I'm there slicing up turkeys and representing who we are as Scrantonians.
Bob, where's the dinner?
Of Lackawanna County.
Where's the dinner this year?
I was getting to that. It's at St. Pat's Church, All Saints Academy, on Jackson Street here in Scranton. And if you can't get there, call us, we'll send somebody to pick you up and bring you to the dinner. Our volunteers are tremendous in what they do, and they do for everyone else. And I brought it here today to the county to get this message out, to do what we're doing. And lastly, I'm strongly suggesting we set up a PTSD clinic in Lackawanna County. Just look at the kid that was playing with Dallas that committed suicide, 20-some years old, he had issues. If he went to one of our clinics, and I have a clinic that we're going to establish with a clinic representative that can do what we need to do to save lives in here. PTSD is a poison, literally a brain poison, that affects a lot of people. And with the clinical psychologist, Dr. Lindenfeldt, we have a program, I've already had him at the VA, that I flew him up here, and I strongly suggest we do it. We could use the church. I have the Holy Cross Former Church, or the Hall, to set up a clinic, and I'm asking the county to look out for the lives of the people that need help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Olis, thank you for, for all your years of, of providing that Christmas meal. How many years have you been doing that?
This'll be 32.
Congratulations, and thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Gahin for having the intestinal fortitude to stand up for the people of this county. This LEO agreement is a bad agreement for the county. It's vague, doesn't outline anything for the controller who has to pay the payables. Mr. Welby wasn't at any of the meetings at all to, to discuss any of this LEO agreement. How he could vote yes on it and not abstain is beyond me. Doesn't even know what's in the agreement. Apparently, the agreement doesn't, according to Luzerne County, it says the two-year agreement calls for the airport to be staffed with police officers from surrounding municipalities. Yet the agreement doesn't say that at all. The agreement says it's gonna be staffed with task force officers. So which is it? We can have police officers from surrounding municipalities, or we can have task force officers? Does anybody have the answer to that question? Because I'm, I'm totally in the dark on this as the controller of the county, and I should know the answers to that. If I don't know the answers to those questions, how in the name of God are the people of this county gonna know? If I can't get the answers as an elected official of our county, how are anybody whose residents of this county gonna know? It states in, Mr. Welby said to give, it's gonna give us, save us $40,000 a year, costs $40,000 a year. Where did that number come from, Mr. Welby? No idea. There is nothing in the agreement that says it's gonna cost 25% of $40,000. It doesn't say that anywhere in this agreement. It says you're responsible for 25% of the cost. What is the cost? That's my question, is the controller.
$36,000.
What is it?
$36,000.
Where did you, where did that number come from? Where is it in the agreement?
Donnie, where'd we get that number? That's from the district attorney's office.
That's basically what we've been paying yearly for the, that's what the program's been costing, and not that we've been paying, but that's what the program's been costing for the last couple of years, Commissioner.
Right, but there's nothing in the agreement that states that. There's nothing in the agreement that states that. So at, at, now the county has passed the agreement, what's to stop the district attorney from charging any number he wants to the counties, he's getting 25%? What's to stop that? There's nothing in the agreement. Contracts are not for the good times, Solicitor. Contracts just for, you know, contracts are for the bad times. This is, this is how the contracts work. We put language in the contract to protect the citizens of this county, and Luzerne County. If we're not gonna put that language in there, how do we know? How do we, how do we take care of all that information? Very, very disappointing, we have an agreement that was settled. To, to the Solicitor's point, this is not executive session privilege. The, the process that the security is done is executive session, sure. The agreement is not. There's no reason in the world why the people of the county, of Luzerne or Lackawanna, don't know that this agreement was drafted, to the point that they had a meeting at the airport and never gave the agreement to the public to discuss. That's how, that's how in the dark this whole agreement was. It's shameful, shameful that we have a Republican who sits on this commissioner board, who voted for this. No transparency, no accountability, and no integrity. None. None. That agreement should never have been adopted by this council, or this commissioner body, and should have never been forced on the people of this county. I've been fighting this thing, and it's only been in effect since 2021, to Mr. Fredrickson's information. 2021, this program went into place, and it was bad then, and it's bad today, and it has nothing to do with security. All they do is do security checkpoint checks, that's all they do, nothing else. They don't patrol the airport, they don't arrest people on the airport grounds. If you park your car out front and you're not supposed to be there, they don't arrest you for that. This is airport security checkpoint officers, that's all they do. They sit there and wait until the TSA calls them and says, "We have someone in line that has contraband, we need to arrest them," and they come out and they do that. How that circumvents our security at the airport, or enhances it, is beyond my comprehension. I've been through the airport many times, too. I've never seen a problem with security there. I've parked out front, they've told me to move my car. So I don't understand what the deal is behind the scenes for this whole LEO program, but it's annoying to me, very annoying, because the people deserve better. The people deserve better transparency, the people deserve better information in an agreement that locks the taxpayers into a fund that they have no idea what that's gonna cost them. This is shameful, shameful for Lackawanna, and shameful for Luzerne. And I'm embarrassed, as an elected official of my county, to think that we're going to actually pass this agreement with that kind of language in there. And we have a commissioner who wasn't at a single meeting to know what this agreement even says, and voted yes, and a brand-new commissioner at that.
Mr. Griffiths, I, I appreciate your passion for, for...
I have no idea.
As I said, I appreciate your passion for taxpayers' dollars, I truly do, and, and I was at the last airport board meeting. And, and also, the information regarding this is, is rather public. The media has been promoting and, and doing stories on this and, and the content of this agreement for quite some time. I think most everyone in this room is at least somewhat familiar with this program. And as far as the, the people that would be hired, I don't think there is anyone that would be signing a check that would look at this as an open checkbook issue. There's an agreement and an understanding as to how much this is gonna cost. Ballpark is around $150,000, and also the ballpark for our county is around $2,000, I'm sorry, $3,000 a month, or $36,000, under $40,000, as I said before. It's a program that has been in effect, and it's a program, as you said, you feel safe while you're up there. You feel safe while you're up there because of what exists right now, and, and the people that are being hired are law enforcement officers. I'm happy with that. If we have additional law enforcement officers up there, better yet, but, but I don't want to see a lessening in the number of law enforcement officers in that airport.
Were you involved in any...
Commissioners, I would...
Joan?
There's no debate.
Joan?
Commissioners, I was just pointing out, too, the, we ultimately, the ultimate check on this agreement is if it becomes too expensive, we can opt out at any time with 30-day notice.
Right. Joan, good morning.
Good morning, Joan Hoda-Wan, Scranton. I got an entirely different topic, but one that's probably more annoying. If you've been watching the goings-on at Scranton City Council lately, you know that one of the issues they're debating is an amendment to the zoning up by Geisinger CMC. And I realize that that's a Scranton issue, it affects their, their zoning board and their city council, and you don't have a say in it, per se. But now I'm talking to everybody who lives in, lives or works in Lackawanna County, because healthcare is an issue that everybody should pay attention to. See, I, I see that guy right there, not a single gray hair on his head. And that guy right there, too. Okay? You're all young. Mr. Welby and I, I, I don't dye my hair, but look at that white hair on him.
I dye it.
When you get in your 60s and your 70s or beyond, you're gonna find out two things about healthcare that are problematic. One is cost, and the other one is access, and that's a major issue in all of Lackawanna County. Geisinger CMC, isn't that the only trauma center we have in the county? You know? So, the fact that they're pushing for a zoning amendment, for them to enhance and enlarge their operations, obviously, the residents in the immediate area have concerns about their quality of life, and can it even be done properly? But, all the residents should be watching this, you know? By the grace of God, I get my care through the VA, because I was stupid enough to go into the Army, okay? And my little guardian angel took care of me all my life. But I do get to see the explanation of benefits that Medicare will send you, to see some of the costs. I have about 10 prescriptions. One of them costs $5,000 every 28 days. That's one, okay? I had a little device put in my chest to monitor my heart rhythm. That little device, the size of a AAA battery, $31,000, okay? And these are cheap expenditures. I spent 12 days in the hospital in 2013. The bill for the room, which was not a private room, a few dollars less than $80,000. So you young people, if you think that buying a house and a mortgage is expensive, or your utilities are expensive, or the price of a car is expensive, God help you when you're 75 years old, because this stuff isn't getting any cheaper. Every year, it's going up double digits. So, when this issue with Geisinger came up, okay, this is something that every resident and worker in Lackawanna County should pay attention to, because sooner or later, you're gonna be 75 years old, okay? And if you don't have both access and the ability to pay for good healthcare, you're gonna be up the creek without a canoe. And there's no reason why you cannot write letters to the editor, contact your elected representatives about your views and what you want, and what you think is the right thing to do. Do not let this, this issue just pass you by like, like reassessment, or the taxes, or whatever, and then you get the bill in the mail. Because that bill's, you live long enough, you're gonna get that bill, unless, of course, you join the Army, which I strongly recommend you consider. But if you, you know, failing that kind of healthcare, you know, which I, by the grace of God, get through the VA, I don't know where I'd get the money. My mother had Alzheimer's, okay? If you want to see a bill, look at that. She wa, she wasn't in skilled nursing, but her bill for memory care, $48,000 a year. So, that's just something I want to bring up. LEO is important, but so is healthcare.
Thank you. And Joan, your former eye doctor sends his regards.
Oh, I got a copy.
Anyone else? Commissioners, other business. Commissioner Gahin?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Welby?
First, Joan, thank you for your service, thank you for your sacrifice, and, and, and your comments regarding Geisinger Community Medical Center are, are, are well-made and well-taken, and, and it, it's, it's something that, that we don't have any say over, we also don't have any say over data centers and, and, and other things, but we, we certainly have our opinions, and, and, and I have, I'm, I'm actually kind of glad that we don't have to make a decision regarding that, that issue, but I, I had personal experience just a few months ago, where an immediate family member was, was having a health issue, and, and I had a difficult time getting her to agree to go to the hospital, and, and she finally relented, and, and we went up to Geisinger Community Medical Center, and we got up to, to the doorway there, looking into the emergency room, waiting room, there had to be 30 or 40 people in there, standing, it was a bunch of people standing, including a, a gentleman standing in there with an IV pole, waiting to get into emergency services. And, and my wife, excuse me, I guess I, I said who it was, but she immediately said, "I am not going in there." We were there months before about another issue, and, and she was in there for almost six hours before they saw her. After her treatment, she had to wait an hour and a half to be discharged after the treatment. And as she stood there in that doorway, she said, "I'm not going in." I said, "Cath, we have to go in. You have an issue, we have to go in." And she was having some, some chest pain and, and heart palpitations. And, and she said, "No, I'm not going in." And she, she meant it, and, and she agreed that we would go somewhere else. I called my brother, who is an emergency room, a registered nurse, and we said we were gonna go up to Lehigh, and he said, "If it's a heart issue, they're only gonna bring you back to CMC because they don't deal with the heart issues." He said, "Go down to Mercy, go down to Regional Hospital," which we did. We got right into the, 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 we got right in for treatment at, at, I still say Mercy, at Regional. And she was in the middle of a, of a heart situation, they literally had to stop and restart her heart twice while we were in there. And, and I know everything worked out well, she's doing fabulous now, but I know, in my heart, I know that there are dozens and dozens, if not, gosh, hundreds of other people that came up to that doorway, the same way that we did, that said, "No, I'm not going in there," and went home instead. And, and I, I, you know, there's, there's, there's no numbers that any of us have regarding successes or, or, or failures regarding that, but there's no doubt in my mind that there are people that went home, and there are people that are no longer with us, because they opted not to wait that, that four, or five, or six hours, however long it might be, before they got back into the, the treatment area of the emergency room. So that, that's a very difficult situation. I also have an immediate family member who lives up there and is part of the group that is against this, and, and I understand that perspective as well. I wouldn't want a monolith out my back window of a home that, that I've lived in for however, however many years, and, and I enjoy and I love the, 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 just that whole neighborhood of, of Naug Park and that area of the Hill Section. It, it's, it's very difficult, but it, it's, it's something that I think... It's very difficult, but it's something that I think the three of us up here are kind of glad that we're not involved in that, because it's a very, very difficult situation to put these people that are making these decisions into, and the people that live up in the Hill Section that are, you know, weighing this amongst themselves. The value of a life is pretty important, but quality of life is important as well. And Joan, again, thank you for your service, and also, I want to thank Mr. Tim Booth, our Director of Veterans Affairs. Thank you, Tim, for your service. Thank you for your sacrifice. Thank you for all that you do for our veterans. The county Veterans Affairs Department is one of the standout counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in service to our veterans. I know of a lot of veterans that I went to school with that served in Vietnam, and some of them didn't come home. Some of them came home and came home damaged, didn't come home as they left. I have friends that I worked with in the 80s at a place that were suffering from Agent Orange issues. And one in particular, his back was literally breaking out, and he was told into the 90s that he was wrong, that that wasn't Agent Orange, and they didn't treat him. And that continued. I know veterans that went down to the VA in Wilkes-Barre, and were told that their issue wasn't caused by their service, and it wasn't true. And they swore at that time they will never go back to the VA hospital ever again. And some of them still live that to this day. But years ago, maybe, whatever, maybe six, or eight, or 10 years ago, maybe it even goes back to the late 20s, but that service changed, and our county Veterans Affairs Department is part of the reason that it changed, and our veterans now are being treated with the respect and the dignity that they deserve. And Tim, thank you for your work in that, and thank you to our team, and thank you also to the people now down at the Veterans Affairs Hospital, excuse me, Center in Wilkes-Barre. And thank you. Thank you for your service, and thank you to all of our veterans that have made that sacrifice, and thank you to the families of those veterans, because they suffered and sacrificed as well. Thank you, Tim. I'm sorry, that's all. I ramble.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming today. Appreciate everybody's input. I want to remind folks that coming up this weekend is our Winter Market. It's going to be at Courthouse Square Friday night, 5:00. It goes from 5:00 until 9:00 on Friday, with 6:00 will be lighting the Christmas tree. Saturday's 11:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. There's going to be a lot going on. I'm pretty sure our director, Maureen, is at DEFCON 5 right now, trying to set up those booths and things with the snow that we got. But there's a little over 50 businesses and local vendors that are going to be there. There's live entertainment, so there's going to be a lot to do. It looks like it's going to be a nice weekend, so I'll encourage everyone to get out. And again, we're getting into the holiday season, so just, you know, a lot of issues that we deal with every day, but be thankful for what we have, and just enjoy the day. So, yes.
May I do one more commercial?
Sure.
The Lackawanna Winter Market is fabulous. It starts Friday, and it starts off also with the lighting of the tree, the Christmas tree that commissioners will be participating in, and also, the Festival of Trees. The Festival of Trees every year goes on, and hopefully, you all participate or see that. It's on the, I almost said Spruce Street, the Biden Street, or Spruce Street side, if you will, of the courthouse, and that's just fabulous. This year's theme is Red, White, and You, celebrating freedom, unity, and diversity in conjunction with America's 250. Coming up also, first Friday, Friday evening, and just some other things that are going on in our county this weekend, like the Peckville Holiday House, which is just incredible. It's actually getting more than just regional attention. What they do up there is fabulous. And I'm not sure about the Music Street Holiday House, if that's going to happen again this year. We appreciate all that has been done by the gentleman that did that, and his passing is, he's surely missed. But also, we have our lights at Naug Park are going on, and that's free. Drive through Naug Park if you want to make a donation when you come out of the park. That money is used to help provide some of the improvements, and also, the summer, free summer concerts that are up there. But one other thing that I just found out about today, and I'm so happy to share this with you, a lot of you probably already know it, but there used to be a little miniature train exhibit, actually, a miniature Scranton exhibit that used to exist. I used to go see it up at the Gertrude Hawk Store up in Dunmore, and I believe it was first back in the Kaiser Roche Shopping Center. It was Don Clark put together this miniature Memories display that was just fabulous. And then also, after it had no other places to go, it was in the mall at Steamtown for a while, well, Attorney Chris Munley stepped up and has provided for the re-establishment of Don's Miniature Memories. Chris bought the whole thing, put it all back together, and it's on display up at the Everheart Museum today and going through the holidays. So that's just a real treat. If you want to go up and catch that Scranton Miniature Display, it's just a real treat to see. And thank you to Attorney Chris Munley for doing that for our community. Thank you. Excuse me, that's the last commercial.
That's good. All good stuff. All right, our next meeting is December 17th at 10:00 a.m. here at the county building. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
He's going to die for lack of a... Okay, a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.